Good evening, everyone. We're in a call to order. Our April 1st City Council meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one proclamation tonight. Whereas on April 16th, 2013 marks the 45th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familiar status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the City of Stillwater is committed to support of the Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to help ensure every citizen of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby declare April 2013 as Fair Housing Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to support fair housing throughout the year. That'll take us down to our consent docket, and we have two items on the consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove either item from the consent docket?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to remove item B from the consent docket.
Okay, item B. Item A, anybody? Is there a motion on item A of the consent docket?
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion and second on item A of the consent docket. And that passes five to zero. We do not have anything or no one has signed up for items not scheduled for public hearing, so that'll take us down to item B of the consent docket. Counselor Scott, you asked for that to be removed.
Yes, sir. Just want to hear a little bit about it, kind of what the plan is.
Chief Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselor. My name's Tom Bradley. I'm the Fire Chief of the City of Stillwater. Tonight, we'd be having before you on the consent docket, a training simulator for the Stillwater Fire Department. This is a simulator is made out of shipping containers that are 40 feet in length. They're double stacked and too wide, and it allows us to perform suppression exercises or training on suppression, as well as heavy rescue and in support of the NFPA 1001 standards for the training of the new firefighters, as well as recurrent training for the Stillwater Fire Department. This originally went on the capital plan back in 2005, and we did some preliminary work leading up to this point, but with the downturn in the economy, this was put off to the side. We were gracious enough to get this into the capital plan this last year, and tonight we're asking you to authorize the expenditure of $79,943 for the purchase of this fire training simulator, sir. Be happy to answer any questions you may have of it, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I think it's great.
Been in the plans for a long time.
Yes, sir.
I did notice in those bids, there's a very wide range in the bids.
Yes, sir. The company that is the lowest and best bid is out of Illinois, and they've been doing this for a very long time, and they actually do some for the federal government. We sent a team up to Illinois about three years ago that looked at this. This system has the ability to expand as time goes on, so the facility that we're putting initially does not have a burn room in it, but we can simulate all the burn with smoke and blackout conditions and things. But in the future, if we see the need, we can expand it out.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other questions, I would gladly move approval.
Thank you, Chief Bradley.
We have a motion and a second on item B. And that also passes five to zero. So it'll take us down to the public hearings, which we have multiple. The first one is to receive public input regarding requests from CBL and Associates Management for a specific use permit. Ms. Evans.
Good evening. Patty Evans, Development Services. This is a specific use permit to allow a medic- healthcare use dentist office in the CS Commercial Shopping Zoning District. The property is located on the southwest corner of the Lakeview and Perkins Road intersection. The lot is in Lakeview Plaza Shopping Center. The property is Zone CS, which is commercial shopping, and all the property around it is also Zone CS. The land use is thoroughfare commercial, which include the uses of medical centers and offices. The aerial photo shows the Lakeview Plaza Shopping Center. This area to the south of the subject property is the New Olive Garden. This photo was taken during construction of it. A constraint to developing this property is large drainage easement and structure that is on it. It's shown in the green, and it, this is easement, goes underground over and comes out into an open easement that flows to the west. This is the site plan. Down here is the large drainage structure and the easement that goes across to the northwest. The building sits right here with the parking lot on the north and the east. The proposed plan does show two driveways off the access road that runs north and south through Lakeview, Lakeview Point Shopping Center, and there won't be any entrances or exits off of the main roads, Lakeview or Perkins Road. The findings include the healthcare use is allowed in the commercial shopping zoning district with a specific use permit, and the comprehensive plan indicates the land use is thoroughfare commercial, which includes the uses of medical centers and related offices. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Dorman, do we have a good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will open up the public hearing, and we have four requests, and I believe they all are in favor, so we'll go in that order. Kelly Harris? Okay. Mr. Brown?
I threw the straw, Mayor.
Short straws happen.
It happens, it happens. Larry Brown, 112 West Hall of Fame, representing Sea Star Real Estate. I'm also here on behalf of the applicant, my dentist, and Gene Gay with, my dentist is here, if you have any specific questions, also representing or here on behalf of CBL. We would just ask for your support. We think this is a good match. This will conclude the outlot development at Lakeview Point. As was mentioned earlier, medical facilities are a use by specific use permit in a commercially zone district. Both the applicant and the owner of the property feel like it would be a good match, and it would be an added facility out there to serve the citizens of the City of Stillwater. My dentist has 44 clinics in five states. They are a full provider, providing general dentistry, orthodontics, endodontics, endodontics, and oral surgery. And I have a personal reason, because right now, for me to get dentistry, I have to go to Edmond, Oklahoma, because that's where my coverage is with my insurance. So I'm a little prejudiced in that my dentist will accept my provider when we get them in the ground and up out of the ground, I'll be able to still stay in Stillwater and then go across the street and spend a few more bucks and support the economy of Stillwater, Oklahoma, at Lakeview Point. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you gentlemen might have. If there's anything specific that I can answer, both Ms. Harris, who is the engineer that worked through the SUP application, and Mr. Gay with, my dentist will be glad to answer any specific questions.
Somebody have any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There was a fourth, and I'm sorry, I can't. Is it Steerin? It certainly could be. That's what I wanted to make sure of. I wanted to make sure everyone had the opportunity to sign up. Okay. So no more questions?
At its regular meeting on March 19th, 2013, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the map amendment as presented.
I would move approval. Second.
I do have one quick question, though, before we head into that discussion. With an SUP, that's much like a zoning question, where it's not, these plans aren't what are being approved, correct? It's just the SUP to allow the medical use.
The use, uh-huh.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that's the question we're talking about.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve this or to accept Planning Commission's recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I will say I do appreciate the additional information she provided.
Okay. And that passes five to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Okay, our second public hearing is on the input regarding the proposed C3 plan. Ms. Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Paula Dennison, Development Services. It is with great pleasure, and I emphasize great, that I present to you this evening about a two-year culmination of efforts from your staff and a number of other staff members, as well as citizens throughout the community, for the Stillwater C3 Plan, the Comprehensive Continuous Cooperative Comprehensive Plan for the City of Stillwater. As you know, the current comprehensive plan that we are operating under was adopted in 2001. A lot of changes have occurred in Stillwater since its adoption in 2001 by the then sitting City Council. Couple of things I will note, that we are projecting in this comprehensive plan out to the year 2030. I do have a brief presentation, but before I delve into it, I would like to say that we, your staff, did not do this alone.
That is true. You mind if I interrupt?
Please.
Okay.
I'd be happy for you to.
I'm going to interrupt, because this, there's quite a group of citizens that helped with this plan, and they deserve all sorts of credit, because it was their, it was their input and their, the citizens' input and their guidance and their knowledge that really helped get this to be the community plan, not just a staff plan, not just a professional plan, but a community citizen plan. And so I would, I want to personally thank and counsel to personally thank the citizens that have helped on it. And I know there are a couple in the room, so if you wouldn't mind standing, if, when I call your name, I would appreciate that, so we can thank you. And those that aren't here, thank you for your time. We had Ron Beer, Kay Heath, Rusty Craybill, Jerry Rackley, Kent Sampson, Bayfar Jahanezay, Jim Scheidler, Marla Ruhark, Nigel Jones, Doug Emde, Tom Williams, David Thomas, Greg Fox, and Josh Pulver. So thank you to those citizens that were involved and helped with this.[815.72][815.72][applause]
I certainly appreciate the recognition for them. We have begrudgingly informed them that we're not done with them yet. We have many other items on our agenda that we are going to use them for, so you know they also assisted us. They were the citizen advisory team that helped us with the corridor redevelopment plan that you, as the council, adopted a few months back. So we do have many, many other opportunities to use them, and they have agreed graciously. I would like to just briefly run through, and please stop me if you have any questions, but this is an abbreviated presentation that we gave to the two community input meetings that we had. In attendance were approximately 100 members of our community who came to those two community input meetings. From those input meetings, we did make changes. We incorporated some textual changes that reflected in your plans that you have before you or that's available on the website. We also adjusted the land use map that is part of this document as well. What is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan, it's a set of goals and objectives, as you saw, as you read through. It's identification of existing conditions and resources of the community, its projections of growth and demands, it's the vision for the community, and that vision, as you can tell, is told through narratives and maps. So now, what does a comprehensive plan do? It serves as a guide based on trends and needs. No, we do not have a crystal ball. As much as we would like to claim that your staff has a crystal ball, we don't. Not all the time, but we do have the ability to analyze the trends and the needs and evaluate the resources that we have available to make some projections out for our future. The comp plan also sets forth public and private expectations. It establishes areas to grow or shrink. Fortunately, the City of Stillwater is a growth community, and we hope that it continues to be a growth community. And the comp plan also reflects changing conditions of the community. So why is the comp plan important? It does help us develop and implement a course for the city. We're not chaotic. We do have a plan. We do have a direction. It supports planning and zoning efforts. It sets rational bases for decisions. As you've already had on your agenda here tonight and almost every night that the council gathers together, there are decisions that you are making. One of the questions that is reflected in all of the reports, and if we, if your staff doesn't reflect it, then y'all catch it and y'all ask us, what does the comprehensive plan say about this? What does the comp plan say we should be doing or where we should be going? Something else about the comp plan, why it's so important. It identifies where we've been, where we are, where we're going, and how we're going to get there, which I think is critical to this community. So the comprehensive plan and you and the community and the citizens, quality of life should improve. The comp plan will anticipate and project growth, as I mentioned earlier, out to 2030. It does guide Stillwater, and it helps us address issues as they come along. And last but certainly not least, change absolutely happens. And if we have any mechanism at all to anticipate that change, prepare for that change, then that change isn't quite as rough. So, the future of Stillwater, the plan will help us guide, protect, enhance, identify, and expect. And here again, it's not just our future, it's our future together, and that's what we hope you have found is reflected in this comprehensive plan. The plan has a number of elements. I will not go through those, but those are up on the screen before you. The land use map, as I alluded to, this is not the zoning map. The zoning map is a tool that the city has adopted, you have adopted, and staff uses to reach the goal and the vision that the comprehensive plan sets forth. Other tools that we have, any of our master plans assist in reaching the overall land use plan vision. Our design and construction standards, our terms and conditions of Stillwater Electric Utility, our subdivision regulations, we could go on and on and on, about all of the tools that are available to us to help us reach the comprehensive plan's vision. I will let you know of one change that we have made. We continue to receive public input from the community. And one change from the time you received your land use map, and I will see if this, yes. If you can see right here where my arrow is, you see the little gray and then below it, the red. This is on Jardoe. It is south of Lakeview. Lakeview is the main east-west road. This dark black line is the city limits. In the comprehensive plan land use map that was included in your plan documents and is on the website, this small gray box on the west side of Jardoe is red. We did receive some community input, and the suggestion was to change that to gray, which signifies industrial, as opposed to red, which is commercial. And we have gone ahead and done that. So whatever action tonight by the council, I would ask that you consider that one amendment to the land use map that has occurred since the map you have in your hands. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions before we open it up for public input.
Is that the southeast corner of Jardoe and?
It's not right at Jardoe and Lakeview. It's not quite the half-mile section south of Lakeview Road. This is Lakeview, and it's this little gray box. It's actually where RJ Drive and Alexander Warehouse are located.
Okay.
Got you.
Are there any questions about the plan itself? And I do appreciate those of you who were able to come by and hear the public input at the community meetings that we had. We thought it was extremely beneficial.
I just have a comment. I've read this thing, all 100-plus pages, and it's extensive, but I want to thank your staff and the committee that put this all together, because I can see it, it's a job well done, number one, and number two, it really is a guide that we can use.
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody for that.
Appreciate that.
One thing that I've appreciated that you pointed out in there is that we keep saying until 2030, but you and the committee recommended that we need to look at this every three to five years. And I totally agree, because it's hard to plan out to 30, and you know that, because things do change, and so we need to really make sure we update it.
Yes, sir. That is one of our commitments, staff's commitment, and here again, we've got the citizen team committed to help us as well. Professionally, I do not believe that any community needs to let a comprehensive plan be any older than a maximum of five years at the most, because, especially in a growth community that we are, change, grow, tear down, build up, expand, it's always occurring, and yes, we need to make preparation for that.
I have one more comment, if I may. That I kind of saw a hint of annexation, but with the population demographics, and since I've served on that committee for about three years, in order to get to the population within the city, within the tax base, is going to be difficult, and I didn't see much written about annexation. I know that all the things that affiliated with that, but it's got to happen if we're going to grow.
It does. We did not regurgitate the annexation plan that we had drafted a few years ago in this. One of the, and I can get back to the map right quickly, one of the reasons that you see the urban area so far outside the existing city limits is because it does incorporate the recommendations of the annexation plan. So it is, it is by default reflected in this proposal as well.
Because it's got to happen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Paula, I appreciate the copy that you gave all of us, the review is, and I know there's one on the website, is it, is it easy to get to? Can the public find it?
Yes, sir.
You can't guess whether everybody can find it or not, but I guess, let me just make the point that I really would like the plan easily accessible so people can review it and look at it at their convenience.
If folks aren't as familiar with the website as many others are, it is located under the document center, but we will definitely be able to move it to the forefront, at least to keep it at the forefront for the next few weeks or so. So folks can get used to what the look is.
Right.
We will do that.
Is the plan at the library, public library currently?
Yes, sir. It sure is, and we have a hard copy available here at City Hall, and we more than happy to, you know, burn CDs, direct folks to the link on the website, or if they so desire to have a hard copy, they can purchase one through City Hall.
I've got more of a philosophical question for you than a specific on this. I know the first year or so, when I was on council, we ran into multiple, here was the application, and the staff finding was, does not meet the comp plan, but does meet existing, or, you know, neighboring use. And so it had a, it has a contradictory, the reports often have a contradictory kind of flair to them. And obviously, the idea behind the comp plan is, we were estimating what's going to happen where, in a general sense. Here's my kind of philosophical question to you. When an application doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, how should council look at that? I mean, this is not the zoning map.
No, it's not.
This is not the law of the land.
No, it's not.
But it does carry weight, and it is important.
Yes, it does.
And that may be more of a study session question for you, but I think it's an important philosophical mindset that we need to...
Just off the top of my head, the comp plan as a guide, and any guidance document is, as you said, it's not the stone tablets. It is not the law of the land. It is a tool to help us reach where we feel and believe and can anticipate we want to be. Is it always going to be precise in the application is meeting the comprehensive plan? No, because every map amendment that comes along, if the Planning Commission is the recommending body, and you as the sitting council, the deciding body, deem that that is the feel and the look and the place that that specific area of the community needs to be, then by default, we're already changing the comprehensive plan. We may not be adjusting the map, but through those rezonings and through the approach of the Planning Commission and the council, we are making those changes. It keeps the document very alive, and there again, it comes back to what the vice mayor alluded to, we have also a commitment, staff does, to keep the document very alive and to meet the changing needs and conditions and resources of the community, as well as your direction.
Well, but with that said, given that the plan was so old, it made sense that we would see some inconsistencies.
Yes.
But maybe I'm being too simplistic, but in my mind, going forward, I would like to see people using and referring to that. We had public sessions, we've had multiple years of time for developers and engineering firms to comment on it. I would, I would hope that we're using it as a good planning tool, and, you know, if somebody wants to build a high-rise, we have a spot for that, and they would maybe go look at that spot first.
Yes.
Before they put it in my backyard, which I don't believe is owned that way. So, you know, I would hope...
No, sir, it's not. I'm looking right at it.
I would hope that you would be telling developers and consultants...
We are.
...that come in, that here is the plan, and the council's going to really be looking at this and giving it a lot of consideration.
Even after, sidebar, even after the last time that the citizen committee saw the complete document and was ready to take it for public input at the community input meetings, staff gathered back together and said, okay, scenario, you have these requests coming in, find me on this land use map where they will be in conflict with the existing uses. And fortunately, we were not able to identify any of those situations. So we've done our homework perfectly? Of course not. But we have done our homework. Another thing you'll notice in the comprehensive plan is, we did not drill down to seven residential districts. We kept it very general.
Sure.
High and low. Where are you going? Higher, low? Commercial? We don't have four to six districts. We have commercial areas. That leaves a lot of creativity, because we don't want to specifically limit any developer that will come in, nor the property owner, for the individual use of their land if it falls within commercial corridors or low-density residential areas. So we're hoping that that will alleviate some of those problems as well.
But as you said, you know, if it's in the plan, it's commercial. That doesn't mean that everything non-commercial is prohibited necessarily.
That's correct.
But as Counsel Weaver and the other councilmen were saying, if you look at it as a guide, then you have to apply judgment. If that non-commercial use can be done in such a way as to not hinder the intent, continue to help grow the purpose, there's a judgment they can allow. And so, but it's like you said, they really need to look at the plan first. It's a great guideline.
I greatly appreciate going, this had the working title... I greatly appreciate going, this had the working title of comp plan for almost three years, and I loved it when it came out with the C3 because I think with those, the three terms, the comprehensive, the cooperative, and the continuous, I think the name itself says more than just comp plan.
Yes, it does.
I mean, it truly does say what it's about and how we're going to be using it and what we're going to be doing with it. And I, I greatly appreciate that message. Do we have any other questions for staff? Do we have good notice on this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't have anyone signed up to speak either direction, so we'll open and close the public hearing. And I guess, is there a staff recommendation? If we like what we see, there's a resolution later, so, but is there a staff recommendation?
Planning Commission.
Or a planning commission recommendation?
I can bet what Paula's going to recommend.
I remember what she said at one of the public hearings in the community, so...
Yes.
What was planning commission's recommendation?
Adopt it, please. They're ready to use it.
Hmm, okay.
This is one of those times where, Paula, I think it's fair to say staff encourages...
Oh, absolutely, yes. We're very proud of this document.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We opening, are we opening and closing that public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And that takes us to our third public hearing, and that's to receive public input regarding the closeout of the 2010 Community Development Block Grant. As the waterline project on the hospital.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Valerie Silvers, Grants Coordinator for the City of Stillwater. This first project is for the closeout of the 2010 CDBG grant. Let me go ahead. Okay. Before we start on this closeout, I wanted to kind of bring you up to date. We had some questions and wanted to know what our other CDB projects were doing. Our CDBG 2011 was the street project along Third. It also included some side streets, Arrington, Doty, Maple, that area. That project is completely finished and closed out. We expended all the money of the grant for that one. Our 2012 sewer project is the West College area, and it's north of Sixth Avenue, and it includes Stanley, Pine, Gray in that area. And that one is in final design completion right now, and plant, construction should start this summer on it. And then 2013, we're going to decide, or hopefully decide, that one tonight. And then, back to our closeout, this one was a waterline project. It was called South of the Hospital Water Lines, and it included Adams, Blakely, and Stanley, and the orange area are the new, the new area, the one that's got the hash marks through it. They closed that line and changed its route. That project is now finished. It was about 3,000 feet of six-inch water line, and it included 63 service connections. The design engineer on that project was Cobb Engineering, and the construction contractor was Young Contracting LLC. The full amount of the grant of 117,000, oops, 117,000, oh, 59, is fully expended or committed. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing, and again, we don't have any requests speaking in favor or against, so we'll open and close the public hearing.
Okay. Staff recommends that we accept the 14439 CDBG project and authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate documents.
Any questions? Is there a motion on this recommendation?
Remove approval. Second.
Motion and second. And that is approved five to zero. Takes us to a...
I would just like to mention, I appreciated that second slide because it gets, sometimes it gets confusing. There's a CDBG project we apply for as long as the grant's eligible every year. Some projects move are long in design and construction. Some years, we choose a project that happens very quickly, so they get, they don't stay in sequence. And so it's like you've already closed 2011 before you ever closed 2010. I know it feels out of sequence, but that's, that's why we put that slide on there, just to give you an idea, to keep these in perspective.
A little bit of an explanation on that, too, in that in 2010, all of the project bids came in high, and we had to reject and start over on the bid process. So that slowed that project down somewhat, too.
And on that note, like the 2012 has got, I mean, we've added to it. So it's more than just the grant money to go into that project, so it's, it's a good use of the grant funds.
Very true.
Okay. So that takes us to our fourth public hearing, the public input regarding the selection of the 2013.
That's right. This project is the 2013 CDBG, and the grant has $97,550 in it. It does require a one-to-one match, so the total amount for the grant will be $195,100. The grant, I held two previously, public meetings before the, before tonight. We had some suggestions. This is kind of a summary of those suggestions, the full, your report shows the full amount of suggested options. Because this grant has lots of requirements and regulations, much like the match that I talked about, it also has some, 51% of the beneficiaries have to be low to moderate income, and there's some other things as well. Because of that, I've narrowed the projects suggested down to what I think is going to be eligible for the project. And the first one that I want you to look more closely at is a stormwater drainage project along 19th and Sanger. City crews recently replaced a culvert right in this area, and upon doing that, they discovered that this drainage pipe to the catchment was severely rotted and collapsing in places. So that's the main reason that that's being considered. The project is estimated to be about $102,000 for this one.
How does that one meet the requirements?
These are apartment complexes in here that, and this area. So the beneficiaries will probably be this area here. We've got to wait for an engineer to tell us that for sure, but there's also apartments across here. And apparently, this, this area, of course, the culvert should take care of the flooding that had been happening on the other side of 19th, but it's stopping up and gathering in this area now because that pipe is not draining sufficiently.
With that density housing, there...
Yes, these apartments is, it's very dense housing, and we don't know that for sure, but we think that it'll qualify. Okay. Our other project is also a drainage and stormwater project, drainage project for stormwater. It's in the area of Stonegate. This project has a culvert right in this area, and it's not adequate to handle the drainage. The street is known to flood, as well as the properties over in this area, their, their yards and garages have been known to flood. Most of that is due to the fact that all of these, this area drains into that one culvert, and then goes through here and drains into Brush Creek.
Where is Stonegate?
It's right off of, it's a trailer park right off of Brush Creek. This is Stonegate Road right through here. This is Peachtree, and then Rain Tree is up here. This is Brush Creek.
Northeast of John Deere.
South.
If it's going, if it goes under Brush Creek, it's north of John Deere.
So it's south of John Deere?
No. I'll leave it south.
I think so.
Stonegate?
Yeah, it's, it's north of John Deere.
Yeah, you go south on Brush Creek, about half-mile, and some Brush Creek Road going north from 51 Highway, or a mile or mixed up.
No, uh-uh, no, not Brush Creek, or it, well, you say it is.
South of Brush Creek and 51.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, Brush, yeah.
It's in Stillwater.
Good to know.
I cut off the major street, but I'm pretty sure it's south of...
It's a trailer park.
Okay. This project is estimated to cost almost $404,103,835. Both of these projects are high priority to the Stormwater Management Department simply because they, they have been problem areas. The two projects together total 206,000 and a little over. So... We would probably want to do both of those. My experience, the grant right now is 195,000. My experience, however, is that late April, they increase it anywhere from eight to $17,000 because there are some areas that don't get a project to qualify in the, in the state. Then they give out the rest of the money to whoever does have projects. So like last year, we got 17,000 more. In previous years, it maybe it wasn't that much, but I feel like there'll be enough money for the entire project. If it's not, then Stormwater Management's prepared to step up the rest of the match.
And it's approximately $10,000, I mean, right now, it's about $10,000 over the proposed grant.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions?
When, go ahead, please. 19th and Sanger, you, you said in the very beginning that there's a certain income requirement. Could you repeat what that income requirement is?
Well, it's 51% of the, of the properties have to be low to moderate income. These are apartment housing in here, and those are going to be direct beneficiaries. If this line continues to collapse, they're going to be flooding in their yards. This is also a multifamily sort of addition right here.
How do we determine if those complexes fall within that 50%?
I walk door to door to every one of those and interview them.
Okay.
Well, basically, I interview how many people live in the household and an approximate amount of their income. That's what the grant requires. And it, and we don't know that for sure until I do this, but there are certain areas based on census that we have an idea will qualify. And the moderate income is not as low as you might think it is, and it's low to moderate, so...
And just south of this, I believe, is a duplex neighborhood, and just north of the drainage facility is also duplex.
Yes, that's right. Devon, Devon duplexes are over here. That's right. Well, yes, probably so, yes.
My question is, do we own the drainpipe, the city? Was this not installed when the apartments were built, or did the city install it? Do we own it?
I don't know who installed it. I think we do own it, though.
It was drainage juzma dedicated to the city, so it's our...
That's what I thought.
So we own it? Yeah, we own it.
Both of them? Both, both projects?
Yeah, I don't think we installed them. I think they were installed with the development when the, the public improvements were dedicated to the city and accepted. We now own them in response.
No more questions?
Cody looked it up on his computer, and Stonegate is north of Highway 54.
Is it? Okay, good deal. Thanks for clarifying that.
While I don't believe north or south is contingent on this decision, we'll determine that before they start digging. How's that?
I didn't want Cody to be wrong.
I will approve votes for a purpose.
I have a question. Could you roll back to the, the slide with the proposed? I know these are the ones that staff is recommending, but the proposed projects that...
Oh, all the projects? That all the people, yes? Well...
I noticed a difference in that list than what I remember seeing in the past, and I just wanted to add some, some questions.
Sure.
The, the list, when we went through 10, 11, and 12s, in my memory, what we've used this grant for has been hardcore infrastructure-type things. I mean, talking drainage here, and we had sewer in, I guess, 12.
Water lines.
Road in 11, and water in 10.
That's right.
And I see on that list, we've got one infrastructural type, and then some quality of life, some recreational, and some social assistance in there. Are those type of projects eligible?
Yes, sir. This grant is really very flexible. It has to be something built. It has to be bricks and mortar kind of thing. It can't be like someone's secretary, or, you know, even though it may be...
Operational.
Right, it cannot be that. But it can be, any of these projects that are, are on here. Now, some of the other, there were some suggested projects that would not work, but for the most part, these are.
Okay. Question?
Yes.
Of all those that are listed, then, do they all meet the one-to-one requirements, or they don't meet?
That's part of the reason some of these are not being considered, because that match has to be in place at the time I apply.
Well, my question is, you've shown me all those public input numbers, and do those meet one-to-one, or can we cross some of those off automatically?
That's why I didn't show you more, because they don't meet the, some of them could. I mean, streets could have. Basically, some of them could have, but no, for the most part, they did not have match ready to go.
So for splash pad, et cetera, tennis courts, et cetera, and since you're located, we just say XXX?
For this year.
For this year, okay.
Don't take this wrong.
Okay.
This is not going to, I'm going to have a hard time getting this out correctly, but to me, it's more important that a project meet the spirit and intent of the legislation and the funding that it was intended for than it being a priority of the Stormwater group. I mean, it's good that it's on their list, and they're recommending approval, but just, you know, what my ears hear, that doesn't need to be the main reason we're recommending it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you're telling me both of those two stormwater projects meet the spirit and intent of, of the program, and you as program director are recommending it, that means more to me than, you know, staff saying, this is a high project on our list. Of course, it needs to be something we need to do.
Right.
Does that make, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do understand that, yes, sir.
You know, I'm...
We don't want to use this fund just to solve problems and try to make it fit, so to speak.
No, absolutely, absolutely. But a little bit of the thinking, and we've been, a little bit of response to that, and I think it was kind of a quasi-policy council set four or five years ago. Because when you look, you know, the CDBG, going back to its intent, its intent is to take those areas for the low to moderate income population and provide some utilization of the grant to benefit that population. And with many of these projects, you wind up possibly only benefiting certain segments of that population, but water, sewer, drainage, streets affect everybody who's in that population. So it's a way to ensure that everybody in the area gets some equitable benefit, whereas when you were doing some specialized housing thing, maybe only two people in the 40-house area got a benefit. But when you do a public infrastructure improvement that's needed in the area, you prevent, in this case, a drainage benefit for everybody who lives there. And so it's a, it's a nice way to ensure that a qualified area that all the residents share equally in a benefit by making it a public improvement.
But that, that's not my point. My point is, in your opinion, is that the best area in the city to fix if you had a, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Right.
That's the nature of my, my comment.
Right. And I send out information to the department heads and ask for their input, just like I do the public. And this was the one that did the report, got me the information, and was ready to do it. We had some other projects. The match was not ready to go. That would have also been good projects, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
I think it's kind of inherent in the process. I mean, we know, most everybody knows where those areas are, and that's the areas we look at first. And it's just somewhat of a prioritization of the qualified areas. It really is, yeah.
Any other questions from Silvers?
About its time, Mayor.
Did we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Do not have anyone signed up to speak in favor or against, so we will close the public hearing. And does staff have a recommendation?
Staff does. I would like to, staff would like to recognize or to suggest, recommend that we do both of these drainage projects and authorize the mayor to sign the application documents for the CDBG grant 2013.
Questions of staff?
I would so move.
I would so move.
Motion from Council Weaver to approve staff recommendation, and second from Council Scott. And that passes four to one with Council Pena voting against the recommendation.
And Cody and I finally got it all figured out.
On the where? Good to know, good to know.
It was my fault.
All right, that's gonna take us down to resolutions. And there is a proposed resolution to adopt the C-three plan.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval.
Do I need to read the whole thing?
Well, there was an amendment to the plan.
Oh, as amended.
I would make a motion to approve the C-three comprehensive plan with the amendment.
Second.
Amendment, yes.
With the amendment, what?
With the amendment?
With the amendment.
All right, and then?
And Council Pena, did you second it?
I seconded it.
You seconded it?
Multiple seconds?
Whatever one you want.
I want that one, so. Okay, somebody have any questions? Any discussion on this motion? Let's vote on the comp plan.
Woo-hoo!
We have a comp plan.
Good.
That passes five to zero. Thank you, guys. Okay, and that takes us down to ordinances. Ordinance three-two-two-nine, Mr. Dorman?
An ordnancy zoning attractive land located at two thirteen West Elm Street and one nineteen and one twenty-three South Duncan Street, and one oh-two, one oh-six, one twenty, one twenty-six, one thirty-two, and one thirty-six South Husband Street from HR dash PUD, high-rise plan unit development, RMI residential multifamily intermediate district, and RTM residential two-family and multifamily district to HR high-rise district.
Is there a motion on this ordinance?
I move approval ordinance three-two-two-nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. Passes five to zero. Go down to second reading on ordinance three-two-two-seven.
An ordnancy zoning property addressed to three twenty-four West Biller Avenue from RMI residential multifamily intermediate district to CS commercial shopping district.
Motion on ordinance three-two-two-seven.
So moved.
Second.
That passes five to zero, and ordinance three-two-two-eight.
An ordnancy zoning property addressed to four twenty-one North Husband Street from RSS residential small lot, single-family district to CS commercial shopping.
Motion?
I have a question. Are there any, are there any single families in that, this area, on this particular zoning?
This was the public hearing from a couple of weeks ago, and it, it does contain a house.
Okay, just a house? Okay.
Just to make it legal for them to do what they're doing.
Is there a motion on this second reading?
I move accept, thirty-two, twenty-eight.
Second.
And that passes five to zero. Down to offices, officer reports. You drink first?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Requesting executive session pursuant to twenty-five OS subsection three oh-seven B four for the purpose of confidential communication regarding pending litigation, Robert O'Kerns, trustee of the Robert Owen Kerns Trust versus City of Stillwater, case number CJ two thirteen dash one twenty-eight, Payne County District Court, a pending workers' compensation claim filed by Ricardo J. Encarte, and potential litigation styled Spokane Airport Board versus Michael P. Huerta Administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration, case number thirteen dash one eighty, United States Court of Appeals District Court, District of Columbia Circuit. It is my opinion that in each of these matters, that public disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the city council to prosecute or defend this pending or potential litigation or proceedings in the public interest.
Thank you. Galway?
I just want to mention a couple of things, recognize some things that happened, good things last week. Uh, the Oklahoma Municipal League, once a year, sponsors a government day, a special government day at the Oklahoma State Capitol. Um, the rotunda is reserved for displays of services of municipal government. There were several displays, only two cities had booths at the display, and Stillwater was one of them. Sherry Fletcher primarily coordinated that through the Public Information Office. We had several employees participate in that. Was proud to see Stillwater represented at the Capitol on display at our booth. Good job. And then later in the, that morning, at one of the meetings, there was a presentation, a graduation ceremony. The Oklahoma Municipal League provides a citizens academy. It's a leadership training program where citizens from different cities in the state can register. There's a twelve-week program. Every two weeks, they go for a day in, in different parts of the state, different leadership capabilities around the state. You don't have to be a city employer or a city official. Anybody can enroll in this. But when this was announced last year, we had seven of our employees sign up for this. We had, actually had eight, one of them had left, David Higgins, who was originally in the program. Uh, there, I believe there were thirty-nine graduates, and Stillwater was by far the highest represent, represented. And I would like to say congratulations to Tom Bradley, our fire chief, Paula Dennison, our development services director, Lou Ann Fisher, our wastewater treatment plant manager, Angela Gloffin, our economic development coordinator, Jason Peak, our transportation manager, Jim Scott, our parking and recreation manager, and Lauren Smith, our generation and transmission division manager at our electric department, those seven. We were really proud to see them graduate, graduates, and our congratulations, appreciation.
A lot of effort, and thank you, guys, for your commitment and continued learning.
Um, that's all of government.
Okay. Counselors, you guys got anything?
Go vote tomorrow.
I'd just like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for the excellent form they put on, very professional, and I like it.
About us having that?
Yeah.
That's weird, okay. Got a couple of things. Tomorrow morning, Vice Mayor Hopkins will be on seven eighty AM at eight fifteen with Bill Van Ness for the weekly council show. Wednesday, I'll be on TV thirty-one with Mr. Flady will be joining me, so we'll be talking water. And on Thursday, I'll be on triple play Thursday morning. And I hope everyone had a wonderful Easter and a great opening day of baseball.
Awesome.
So it is spring. Life is good, so. Okay, anything for upcoming meetings? Okay. When, we do have one appoint, we do have appointments with Board of Adjustment. Find my notes on that. Okay, we have two, two seats that terms have expired, and the city members did not wish to be reappointed. Uh, we have applications, and I would, do I need to do these separately?
Yes, sir, since they're new ones.
Okay. I would nominate Terry Ventress to fill a turn, or fill a seat on Board of Adjustment.
A motion?
Nomination, and we had a second. And that passes five to zero. And to fill the second seat, I would nominate Robert Williams.
I'd second that one as well.
Yep, I'll second it as well.
That also passes five to zero. Okay, so Board of Adjustment's fully staffed again. Okay. And then that will, we're gonna recess city council, and I will call utility authority to order. We do have one item on the consent docket, the approval of minutes. Does anyone wish to remove that item from the consent docket?
I move accept consent docket.
Second.
Consent dockets approved five to zero, and that takes us down to general orders. Big recommendation for Country Club Road waterline jumper.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Eric Flady, Water Utilities. Uh, tonight, I have a positive request to get your authorization for construction of a Country Club jumper. Um, this waterline first came about through the city leadership. We were asked in November to find an expedient solution to bring water into the southwest zone to relieve pressure for the citizens by this coming summer. Uh, in January, we selected a course of action. Uh, the design was completed in early May, or as it was, in early March. And then the work, as it goes now, we're ready for bid, so we executed the bid selection. The work will be boring a twelve-inch waterline under Country Club Road just north of Highway fifty-one to connect from the discharge side of the booster pump station in front of the ONQ there. Uh, it's gonna run, again, under Country Club from the west to the east and connect to a sixteen-inch waterline that runs south down the east side of Country Club directly into the southwest zone. So it's a short two-hundred-foot waterline to connect from the discharge side of the booster pump right into an existing sixteen-inch main that pushes, feeds right into the southwest zone.
Boy, I'd move approval of this all.
Boy, I'd second it. It's not a total solution, but it will certainly help.
Do we stop now?
Is that the part that, that becomes positive as opposed to negative? You started out with this as a positive.
Positive that we're getting a quick solution to relieve pressure in the southwest zone, and that we met the time hacks that were asked, so we can get it completed.
I'll second that, by the way.
Hold tight.
We, we can say.
They're done, man.
We can go here.
Take and run.
Just by making a.
This will be the easiest yet, so. Uh, we're also gonna install two pressure relief valves within the city easements to improve fire flow to nearby businesses in the southeast area of that intersection. So specifically, we're looking at the Farm Bureau, the bank, and Walmart. One of these pressure relief valves is going to be under, in a vault, under the parking lot of Farm Bureau. The other one's going to be on the back road behind Walmart, directly behind, I should say Holiday Inn, but the back road that leads to Walmart, directly behind the Holiday Inn and the grass area there. So these valves, again, will increase fire flow in the event fire water is needed. Uh, construction solicitation was held for twenty-one days. Sealed bids were opened on March twenty-fifth. Two bidders were responsive. Uh, the low bidder, Urban Contractors, came in at three hundred and forty-one thousand, and they do meet the, the requirements to perform this work. Uh, staff also recommends hiring a quality assurance representative on behalf of the city to inspect and make sure we get the best quality product and installation we can out of Urban Contractors. This cost is expected to be twenty-five thousand. Uh, staff recommends we utilize an existing contract we have with Myers Engineering for this service. Uh, funds are available on the water capital account. They will need to be appropriated. Uh, the total amount will be four hundred thousand. That's both for construction and inspection. Uh, so pending your questions, staff recommends the trustees, number one, authorize expenditure of the four hundred thousand dollars for this project. Two, award the construction contract to Urban Contractors. And then three, this is kind of two-part, authorize the general manager to execute the construction contract with Urban and amend Myers contract for the inspection services.
When will the project be done?
We targeted, our scheduled date is June tenth for substantial completion. We're looking at June twentieth for final completion. Substantial completion will be that the waterline is operational, meaning it's been tested and disinfected, and it's online. Uh, gave the contractor and the bid documents an additional ten days to dress up, do curbside appeal, and put things back in a better condition than they were when they got there.
So we can move a little more water into my waters?
Why not?
Question, um, traffic. Will, will the construction close off any roads completely, or is it gonna be a one lane?
It's a great question, Council Pena. Um, we have.
I don't care. We won't get into that, you know?
But I have to ask.
We will be boring under Country Club, so due to that construction methodology, we will not be changing the traffic plan whatsoever at the intersection. What we will do is ask the contractor to put in jersey barriers, so the concrete barriers to protect the job site, as well as the citizens on the traffic and cordon that space, so. Uh, should have no impact there. Uh, there are three businesses that this does affect, the ONQ, Ron Shirley, and then Farm Bureau. Um, I have contacted and spoke with all the owners or managers for the three of them. Seems positive for the most part. So, but they have been notified, and again, all this is on city easement property, so they understand, you know, the circumstances behind getting new infrastructure established to support the community at a bigger, bigger spectrum there.
This question probably doesn't need to be asked, but since I know we're gonna redo the whole intersection there when we widen Country Club Road, suppose that everything's been planned, so this will be ready to go? Won't cause any problems?
It's also a good question. Uh, we did get with Melburger Brawley through Mr. Peak, got with ODOT, and did a coordination meeting to make sure that we're looking at the future widening, looking at the existing infrastructure, the new infrastructure. And we planned accordingly, so this bore that will go under Country Club is longer, so it will extend to the, what will become the future paved distance of that widening and does not conflict with the current plans that they have for other utilities there.
I just have one more small question. You're taking a twelve-inch line and hooking it into a sixteen-inch line?
Yes.
But we have sixteen-inch line at the pump station there?
We do. We're, there's an, the existing line coming out of the pump station is a sixteen-inch line. We're gonna tap into that with a twelve-inch line that'll come across, so around the booster pump station and come across under Country Club and tie into another existing sixteen-inch. Because of the short distance between the two sixteen inches, the smaller diameter pipe still provides the same hydraulic capability that the sixteen-inch would.
No.
It's negligible to where the investment for that. And putting, putting that, putting the larger bore in, um, there's no reason to do that for better effect and gain.
Any other questions?
I can get with the offline, and we can show our modeling and the hydraulics behind it to help explain the decision we made on that.
We'll need to make a recommendation, and you could vote on, one motion can cover the entire recommendation.
I heard his recommendation. Can we move on that recommendation?
All, all the recommendations under one motion?
Yeah, if he makes.
He did.
He made his recommendation.
Yes, he did.
Well, I would so move.
A motion, and second to approve recommendation.
Weaver and. Whoever you want it to be.
We did this long time ago.
We just want this moving forward. Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation.
And I'm still.
April Fools?
Yes.
You better not be tricking us now.
Okay, that passes five to zero.
We, we've got those staffing deals all over the city of Stillwater.
There is no other business on SUA, so is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
Weaver, second.
Going to adjourn?
They didn't, it didn't stand. Uh, yes.
We are adjourned. Okay, and that moves us back into city council meeting, and a motion for executive session.
Can we stop it?
Second. Motion and second for executive session. And that passes five to zero.